Oh, no, Rick, we've got that. Which screen do we want to display? I don't know. I don't know how to resolve that. I'm gonna skip it, and I'm gonna assume that it's not an issue on a map. So let's just, we'll go with it. Not quite like that. Well, sorry, Peggy. You can go away, and that is okay. And... Oh, woo! How professional. Welcome, one and all, to the June Kingston R A S C Kingston Center Monthly Meet. I'll begin just by describing the scene that you see here. It was last night. I was not all that certain that the view would turn out the way it did. The sky was very cloudy on the horizon, which I thought would block everything. But I got down at Kingston waterfront about 8:30. I set up. The moonrise was 8:50-ish, 8:53. By nine o'clock, there was no moon anywhere. 9:05, nothing. So I went back to my car. And as I was getting on the road, I drove back down towards the lake. Turn right. Before I could turn right, I saw the moon. So I parked again, went back, set up. And I hadn't really missed much because it was so pink. But it was a beautiful sight, and there were lots of kids on the boardwalk, stopping to take pictures and look up at the sky and ask, "Is that the strawberry moon?" Yeah. It's a full moon. It's a full moon, and it's June, so you're inside. But yeah, it was quite exciting. Our First Nations Land Acknowledgements. The R A C Kingston Center acknowledges that we are on the traditional homeland of the Adnischen Abi, Paudanasani, and Huron-Wendat, and we thank these nations for their care and stewardship over these lands. Tonight's agenda, we'll welcome everyone and have a couple of announcements. Our feature presentation from Jenna Hines from Toronto, the Executive Director of the R A S C. Then we'll have a five-minute intermission. Rick Wagner, What's Up in the Sky? And by request on the chat this afternoon, I'll give an astrophysics demo. We suspect that much of what would have been in John Hurley's National Council report might be in Jenna's. So that's a... We might skip over that. And then if there's anyone with members' reports, anyone got a thumb drive that they want to bring up at the break? No? Okay. So welcome, members and guests. I understand we have a new member. I'm sorry, what's your name? Welcome. On Wednesdays, we have Zoom Social, which is an opportunity for members to chat and discuss what we're up to. It's Zoom-only, and to join, an email with the Zoom invitation is posted to the center's email chat list. On June the 12th, which is tomorrow, we will be having our next astrophotography tutorial session via Zoom. And we will be focusing on planetary imaging, and our guest presenter is Ben Long. The R A C Kingston Center Monthly Newsletter Regulus is out from our editor Roger Hill, and it can be found on the R A C Kingston Center website. I believe on the right side, there's links, and you can find it that way. Our presentation tonight is Jenna Hines. Jenna is well-known to most of us as the Executive Director and the Toronto Office, and it is my great pleasure to welcome her here tonight, and I thank you so much for coming. Now, I gotta mute, right?
Perfect. Oh, when I guess I have to share a screen?
Oh, should I stop share? That's what I...
My poor little computer. There we go. All right. Yeah, I'll have to get Peggy to...
You need permission.
I do need permission, yeah. Is that Walter McDonald?
Yes.
Oh, good. I was chatting with him earlier this week.
Oh, that's why I confused. You are the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada.
Oh, yes, I am. I'm not me, sorry. I am all of us.
Yes.
Perfect, okay. I'm just sharing my whole desktop and... Okay, good. Peggy is applauding, so we've got, I think people at home can see the screen, and we got this. Thank you, Malcolm, so much for the introduction, and thank you all so much for having me here. I really appreciate that I've been invited. I don't usually go to centers unless I'm invited, and so I really appreciate that you've invited me out here. It is my pleasure to be out here today. I'm so sorry. I know you're brand-new. This is probably not going to be that interesting for you. This, I'm gonna be telling you all a little bit about what's happened over the past seven years. I know you have all been very involved in the society for a really long time, as far as I can tell. Welcome to those who are brand-new. So I'm gonna kind of get into what happened in the past seven years. National Office went through a big financial struggle. I'm sure many of you know. I'm gonna tell you about why I think it happened, and what all happened in that time, and then how I think we've learned from it, and how I see the society moving forward as a whole. So that's the plan for tonight. First, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about myself, because most, many of you know me, but I'm not sure you know about sort of like my personal life and the things that I like to do. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what National Office does as well. I know that question comes up quite a bit. What my experience was with the R A S C in my first time here as the outreach coordinator, and then I left for a bit, what happened when I was gone, and then what happened when I came back as the Executive Director and how we're moving forward with it. So when I first got into astronomy, sort of everyone's introductory bit of their life into astronomy is a bit different. My first experience with astronomy was in Florida at my grandparents' house there. It was very light polluted, but they had access to a golf course, and my parents used to take us out onto the golf course and look at the stars. I don't have any photos of that. I do have photos of me very safely operating a golf cart at the age of five. And it was about that age when we'd sit out there and we'd look at the stars. But my parents didn't know anything about the stars, so they knew what Orion was, and that was about it. So we would look for Orion, and then we'd look for Orion's belt, and then we'd look for Orion's VW Beetle, and then we'd look for Orion's golf clubs, and we'd just find things in the sky that had nothing at all to do with astronomy. It was sort of like looking for asterisms that didn't exist. But it was enough to get me excited about space. And then, as I got older, we used to spend, especially around the Perseids meteor shower, we'd spend nights out on the dock of the cottage, looking at the stars. And I didn't follow, I didn't sort of go into astronomy professionally. I also loved the ocean and the water and nature and all that stuff. So when I was young, I started, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to close that window, I'm so sorry, those little things up there. I started young with the ocean. This was in Newfoundland. I loved touch tanks, and that led me, what's that? I don't know if I can get my, oh, there we go. There is my cursor. Perfect, okay. And so I started young, loving the ocean, loving nature, and that led me to an undergraduate degree in marine biology at, gotta come back to the screen, at Mount Allison University in New Brunswick. And while I was there, I got to do a whole bunch of scuba diving research. I've been diving since I was 13, so more of my life than I haven't been. And this was in Bonaire. I got to research reef-building corals in Bonaire. And I loved it there. I loved working with animals. I also got to work at the Atlantic Wildlife Institute, which was a wildlife rehab facility. And I always throw these in because they're adorable, the little squirrel. And I loved working with animals. Once I finished my time at Mount Allison, I briefly went to Edinburgh and I did a science communication degree, because it turns out I'm actually not that good at science. I'm good at talking about science, but I'm not good at science. So I did a science communication degree, and then when I came back, I started working at the Ontario Science Center. That was our snake, Henry, the ball python. And I loved my time there, and it was there where I got to meet members of the R A S C. This was Toronto Center. Toronto Center does solar observing, or well, did solar observing. Yeah? There you go. I didn't know that at the time. I haven't met her since. I did, we did solar observing at the Ontario Science Center, and I got to take Henry out there, much to her chagrin, to observe a little bit. There he is again, looking through the eyepiece. And then, after meeting the R A S C in Toronto, I found a job posting as the outreach coordinator. I applied, and then I got to work there, and I got to do lots of cool stuff. And some of you may remember some of the stuff I've done when I was outreach coordinator. I'll get into that in a minute. The, getting, leaving the sort of R A S C stuff for a minute, I also wanted to mention the other thing that I absolutely love, which is rock climbing. I love climbing. And this photo on the left here actually was with the national recorder for the National Council. He and I went out and climbed that route together. And while we were out there, we were talking about doing a RASK mountaineering trip. So if anybody here has any interest in mountaineering or rock climbing or anything like that, let me know, because I'd love to plan something like that, a little overlap of the hobbies. And that's me. That's everything that makes me who I am. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the National Office, just so you're aware of the context. This is the office space. This was an event we held with Royal Canadian Institute of, sorry, yeah, Royal Canadian Institute of Science, R C I. This is relatively new. We got this space in 2020, end of 2021, beginning of 2022. This comes up a lot, and staff at the office went through a long period where they were changing a lot. They've been pretty steady now for a while, so here is who is at the National Office at the moment. Now, Ed, who's this fellow here, he's our finance manager. If anyone has finance questions, he's the person you get to on the phone. And he's been here since September of 2023. Michelle is the one who answers the phone. If you have not spoken to Michelle yet, I recommend calling the office just to chat with her. She's lovely. She really enjoys talking on the phone with members, which is great for us, because so many of our members prefer to interact on the phone. And then we have Reem, who has been around since 2020, but she's going on maternity leave this summer. Congratulations, Reem. We have posted her job and had over 200 applications, so we're in the process of hiring somebody new for that. And she does the bulletin, the newsletter, social media, all of that stuff. And it's one of the few jobs at the society where having astronomy as a background is actually really helpful. Pretty much only my role and hers are the two that matter for that. And so we're excited to hire somebody who's got some experience in astronomy for her role as she's gone for the year. What do we do? Very important. A lot of times, especially with centers, you guys do so much on the ground when it comes to astronomy. You do a lot of the work of getting out there and hosting telescopes and doing observing nights and running astrophotography workshops and all that. What does the National Office do comes up a lot. So this is the list of what we do. We do a lot of financial management. And so we run our database system with all of our membership information. We take in donations, and then we redirect the donations to the centers. And we manage the database system as much as the system can be managed. We publish books. We publish the handbook and the journal. We publish a calendar. And we provide administrative support to volunteers. I think many of you and I have worked together. And if you haven't worked with me, you've often worked with other people in the society. We do our best to support the many volunteers that we have. And then we have all of our national-level programs, so that includes things like certificates. So observing certificates. Rick, you've got a ton of them. Where'd Rick go? There you are. You've got, like, I keep seeing your name on there. You've got, like, all of them. We get good applications for the observing certificates. If you haven't tried them yet, definitely worth trying, because you get pins and little certificates and everything. We also have astroimaging certificates, which we don't advertise as much. So if there are astro imagers around, I definitely recommend giving them a go. These are all only open to members. And we have laser pointer usage. We give out awards. We run the General Assembly. We produce newsletters. We have the archives, which some people don't always see as a member benefit, but they have been digitized, and they're on our website, most of them. And so it's quite a useful resource there, even if not necessarily used by a huge percentage of our members. They're really valuable, and we don't do it. Who will? It's good to have those all archived. We provide outreach materials to centers. Just brought that back this year. And we have our online store where we sell all this stuff. We have Zoom available for center use, and we provide insurance for center events as well. It's one that people seem to really like. And this is probably going to be kind of boring for you guys. This is the structure of the society. I wanted to mention it because if anybody doesn't know how it works, it's important to talk about. We have the board, who does sort of like the big top-level overseeing of decisions. And then the board works directly with our committees, like the Education Public Outreach Committee, the Finance Committee, the History Committee, everybody. We have the National Council, John Hurley, who is your rep. I'll do my best to remember to update everybody on that. And then we have the National Office in Toronto. And then we have the centers sort of communicating with the board through the National Council. So the centers get their representation at the board level through the National Council. And then we have members who kind of get to interact with a bunch of different people in the structure, which is great. It's nice to be able to, I don't know, interacting with members is one of my favorite things to do at the National Office. So that's sort of the overview of what the National Office does and why we exist. I want to talk a little bit about my, where I'm coming from as the Executive Director now, and how my time here has influenced me in the decisions I'm making now. This is what I did when I was here from 2018 to 2021 or so. I was the outreach coordinator, youth outreach coordinator originally, but then we sort of expanded it after that. Did a bunch of stuff. We had the Insider's Guide to the Galaxy back during the pandemic. We ran online programming. And we did what we could to support the centers before that as well. And then one of the big projects, which I know is fairly controversial in some cases, was we had the Robotic Telescope in California, which we have since gotten rid of. But I really loved having that project, and it was really a really neat thing to have. I know a lot of members didn't see the value in it, and I understand why. But getting to work with students and showing them how to image exoplanet transits and things like that, I thought it was great. I understand that not everybody got to see how it was used, and we didn't quite hit our goal with how that was shared with the society. But it was still, I think, a fantastic project that was worthwhile doing, and it did bring in some money through fundraising and those sorts of things. We did end up getting rid of it in 2023, and I'll get into that later. In my time at the R A S C, in that time period, a lot changed from when I got there to when I left. When I got there, I was the fourth employee at National Office. We had Randy, yes, Randy, Executive Director, Renata, the finance manager, and Julia Misur, Membership Coordinator, and that was it, and I was the fourth. Once we got there, staff started to increase, but one of the first things that happened was that Sky News was brought in-house. So Sky News had previously sort of been, the magazine had previously been sorting, sort of operating separately from us, and they brought it under the R A S C's umbrella, as it were. Phil came in, the new Executive Director, Phil Groff, you may remember. He came in in 2019 as Sky News was coming in-house. And after that, this number of staff we had started to really increase. And we had, we had our fundraiser bringing in grants for staff. So we had a lot of staff coming in and doing extra stuff. We had a membership coordinator. We had summer students. A lot of people coming in through the door. We also saw significant staff turnover in this time, so staff started to change a lot. And I know that was hard for centers because they didn't know who to talk to or how to get a hold of people, because people kept changing. So that was a big issue. We also lost Renata. I don't know if you remember her, Renata Kojel. She was our finance manager, and she retired. And that was hard, because that's institutional memory. She was around for 10 years at the National Office. And then, woo-hoo, we got a new lease. And the new lease was in downtown Toronto after COVID happened. And it is what it is. We have that new lease now. I left at the end of 2021, early 2022, for a number of reasons. Some that were professional, some I felt like I was taking on a lot of work as people were leaving and staff was turning over. And so I was feeling a little bit burnt out, and part of it was personal. I needed to spend some time with family. So in that time that I was gone, I was, I left in January 2022, and then I was asked back in February-ish 2023. I came back in March, and then I was Executive Director by May. So in that time, National Council, the connection between the members, the centers, and the board, National Council wrote an open letter to the board saying, "You guys should look at your finances. It's not looking good," which was a very good thing to have written. There was a huge increase of expenses in 2022. And there was also a lack of communication. So there wasn't, the board wasn't talking to National Council as well as it should have been talking to National Council. And that's hugely important, because we could have caught this a lot earlier if there had been some more of that communication. So in that time, lots of, lots of financial stress on the society happened in 2023 to 2023. And so when I came in in 2023, I knew we had a problem on our hands and a couple of things. We're sort of already in the works to solve that problem, but we had a lot of work to do. One of the first things that happened, this is before I even got back, was that Sky News closed. And that was really hard to see. And Sky News filled a gap in astronomy in Canada that has yet to be refilled. And I think it's a really important gap that unfortunately now still exists. We just don't have introductory-level astronomy stuff. We only have the journal, which is good, but it's heavy. And we don't have stuff that's fun for new people anymore. So that's a big, that was a big loss. Phil Groff left, the previous executive director left in that time. And we closed the Robotic Telescope and the Robotic Telescope program, which was hard but very important to do, because in so doing, we did not have to, besides that one, we did not have to liquidate any other asset to keep ourselves afloat. That, we liquidated that, and that kept us able to pay our bills through until we started selling our books again in the fall. So that was really important. And it actually made not, it didn't make money, but it sold for pretty good money. We sold it for about $40,000 US, which was not bad compared to what we bought it for. And it sold to a VP, a former VP of Google, who has since been really kind to us and very helpful. And it was hard to see it go, because it was my program, but stuff has to be done. A lot of the office staff left. That was actually really helpful for us, because if you've ever run something like this, you know how expensive staff are. So a lot of our staff left. By the time that I came back, we had one person left. So it was me and the membership coordinator. That's all we had. And because of that, we started reducing the programming, and we also dismissed the contract fundraiser. This was a trickier decision, and I'll get into why we chose to do that a little bit more in a bit. And it has to do with restricted funds. We did closely evaluated everything we were spending money on. That was one of the first things we did, is went through, where's all this money going as soon as we got there? And then we started having more frequent board meetings, because the board was not meeting, I think they were meeting quarterly initially. And then we started meeting, in that time, we were meeting multiple times a month. Now we're back to once a month, which is pretty good compared to other not-for-profits I've worked with. That's more frequent than a lot, so we've upped that number and made sure that the board is looking at the financial statements every single month. They know exactly what's going on, all the detail that they need, so that they can make the right decisions. So that was 2023. 2023 was sort of a crisis-fixing year. And that's not how to run an organization. That's how to right the ship, but we gotta pilot the ship after. So what do we do in 2024 to fix all these problems? One of the first things we did was we reduced the National Office scope. National Office had taken on all this extra stuff, and even, even my role as the outreach coordinator, it's valuable, but it was never focused on helping, it was not as focused on helping the centers as it should have been. Having one person at National doing, being paid to do outreach is not as effective as having one person at National supporting hundreds of people doing outreach at the centers. That's what we should have been focused on. So we started reducing the scope of what we were doing. We stopped focusing on marketing and having summer students and all that stuff. And now we're just back to what we were doing in 2018, basically. We're doing the bare bones, as much supporting the centers as we can. We've been extremely cautious about seeking restricted donations and grants. That was one of the, one of the parts that got us in trouble, is that we said yes to an extremely restricted gift that had all sorts of rules about how we used it. Can't use those gifts for the baseline operations, and we hadn't covered our baseline operations. So if we're accepting these gifts that have restrictions on them, we need to make sure the baseline costs are covered before we do that. Same goes for grants. That was part of, in my opinion, what led us into this problem in the first place. We had, especially with staff, we had a lot of staff who were brought in on grants, and then the grants ran out, and then you still keep paying the staff, and the staff are really expensive. We, during, after Renata left, the accounting was moved out of house. The accounting for the society, which is like all of the financial spreadsheets that we prepare every month, all of the payments in and out, that was moved to an outside accounting firm, which for our society, I think, was a mistake, because our society is very complicated in terms of how money moves around, how the centers work with money flowing in between. If you move something out of house, people have less of an idea of what's going on. So we brought the accounting back in-house. That's what Nowad does. That took a little while to get going, but he's very, very competent now, and he's able to, like, he knows exactly everything that we do, everything, how it all moves around, and how, you know, how one thing affects another. And that was not the case when the accounting was done outside of the R A S C. And we have also been really careful to more broadly and more frequently share the financial statements. Having National Council as a safety net was really, really important, and it is really, really important. And in fact, even when we were doing the budget, and I can't remember if it was 2024, 2025, when we went to National Council, they came back and said, "Hey, there's a mistake." And we went, "Ooh, yep, there's a mistake," and we fixed the mistake. We need, as much as we do, what we can to keep everything right. We need the extra eyes to check this stuff. There's a lot of stuff to take into account, and having National Council there is extremely helpful for that. I was asked by, I did this presentation in Windsor two weeks ago or so, and I was asked to provide sort of like a vague breakdown of how we make our money and how we spend our money. So I have added that in, and you guys get to benefit from Windsor's question. So here's sort of an approximate breakdown of how, of our revenue and expenses, a little bit separately. And this is based, a bunch of caveats to do with this. This is based on 2024, with anything that's not repeatable taken out. So 2024 was the solar eclipse, that all the solar eclipse glasses, sales, the expenses and the revenue that came from that, that has been removed. There's, yeah, I'll go into more of the caveats in a little bit. Here is, come now. Here we go. Here's sort of a vague, our revenue is really simple compared to our expenses. Big breakdown of our revenue. We get a little under half of our revenue from membership. These are about 40%, both, and this is about 20%. So our donations used to be a much bigger part of our revenue, but all of that money was, much of that money was restricted, because they were restricted grants, restricted gifts, that sort of thing. This is about our split from last year. So that makes total revenue about $649,000. I have simplified this and removed COGS, because I don't want to get into what COGS is and how it's involved. So I've taken out all of our shipping and stuff. With, when shipping is brought into it, the net revenue is about $600,000 or so. That's accounting for all of the other, this is like the sending materials out to people, that sort of thing. Here are our expenses. So in this, we have the publication costs, about $100,000 a year. I've lumped in staff salaries and other member benefits together, because in my opinion, the staff are a pretty big member benefit. Your membership dollars are paying for me to be here right now. We do as much of our work for the centers as we can. I know there's some stuff that we don't do for the centers necessarily. And we do administer how we sort out the handbook and all of that, but it gets a little bit muddy when we get into those details, because of course, members receive the handbook. So it's, I'm throwing our staff into member benefits for now, which means that member benefits account for about 52% of our expenses. And that includes salaries, so yeah, so that's fine. It includes all the staff stuff, driven, our membership database, the handbook mail-out to members, both the shipping and the printing of the books, and the website for RASK National. It also holds the archives, the Zoom accounts, insurance, awards, and then other committee expenses and the GA. So that's sort of what we include under member benefits. Office administration is staff phone lines, the Google account. Actually, the Google account is also sometimes used by the members, but we've left it in administration. Corporate and financial services is the audit, and, hold on. Credit card bank charges, stuff like that. And our insurance, National Office's insurance, that doesn't apply to you guys, fundraising expenses. Then we have the office rent, which is, hurts me to look at every single time. And then miscellaneous other expenses are things like depreciation of our purchases. So that's total expenses of about $640,000 a year. So even in the basic stuff we do, we have a bit of an operational deficit. We have a little gap between what we bring in and what we send out. Last year, we made up for that gap with the solar glasses. This year, we're pushing publication sales to make up for that gap. I'm gonna talk a little bit about why that makes me nervous, because we sell a lot of our stuff to the US, but it's something that we have not, we are actively thinking about, so I'll talk about that a bit in a minute. Here's all the caveats, because I know this is being recorded, and I want to put the caveats out there. You don't have to read through these. This is based on 2024 numbers. As I said, solar glasses have been removed. Anything non-replicable has been removed. I removed COGS and shipping for simplicity's sake, and then I moved, yeah, all of that money about freight and shipping. Some items were moved from where they're shown in the financial statements into where I put it in there. So for example, the... So for example, the handbook printing is in cogs in the, yep.
Can you elaborate on what cogs is?
Co- cost of goods sold. So it's the co- yeah, I don't like cogs. Cause it can be kind of anything depending on how you show it. Um, ca- cost of goods sold is the cost of doing business as it were. So things like technically you can put the, um, printing of the handbooks, the printing of the calendar, the printing of the journal, all could be in there. It's not for some reason. Um, we have it split up in a different way. So that's why I've moved it around a little. Um, it's essentially the cost of producing the thing that you're sending out. So shipping is in there too. Um, I know I've gotten into discussions with my dad about this because for a while, I think one of his organizations was putting rent in there because technically having a building was part of the product they were producing. Cogs can be a bit tricky, but it's that, it's meant to be the cost of the selling of something. And the cost associated with selling something and it's how we recognize stuff as it goes out the door. Does that clarify enough? Okay. Um, and then this other thing, I wanted to just say this is subject to change over time. For example, um, the outreach materials that we spent money on this year for centers, not in this spreadsheet right now. Um, so as we bring, uh, programs back, this will change a little bit. Um, and we are still looking at creative solutions to fix costs. Um, so that's things like rent and right now shipping is really expensive. Um, so we're, we're finding, doing our best to come up with interesting solutions to the things that are still costing us lots of money. Um, our website is one of those as well. We are looking at downgrading from our currently very expensive hosting service to something that is less reliable. But how reliable does a website have to be when we're an astronomy group? If it's down for an hour or two, usually the world doesn't end. So we can sort of afford to, to drop our services in some, in some cases. So caveats done. Um, what happened? Where did we go wrong? What caused us to do this? What, how did this happen? Uh, I've thrown a little timeline up here and I haven't quite updated this for two thousand and twenty-five yet. So if two thousand and twenty-four is on the next slide, um, but this is just so you have an idea as I'm going through this of what happened. Um, two thousand and seventeen was, the core staff was just three people and that was when the contract fundraiser was hired. I came on board in two thousand and eighteen, Sky News and new staff came in in two thousand and nineteen. Covid happened, what a fun time. Uh, more staff were brought in, everyone worked remotely. Then we had staff turnover, Renata Adella left. Um, we moved the accounting out of house and then we started to see those, those, um, grants end for staff contracts. At twen- in two thousand and twenty-two, we had fifteen staff members at the National Office. Um, remember that we have three now with a part-time person, so we've dropped it way back. Um, we also got the new lease, uh, then. And then in two thousand and twenty-three was when we started to dial it all back. So the lessons that we learned, first off, grant-based fundraising can be tricky. Um, because there are restrictions on what you can do with that revenue. A lot of our grants had requirements. We had to provide certain things. We had to do certain projects in order to get those grants. And if we're doing those certain projects, that means we're not paying for the baseline. Where that money coming in is for that project. It's not for rent and outreach programs that we already do. It's for new stuff and that's tricky. It often comes with more expenses than the grants cover because suddenly you have to worry about staffing. You have to worry about training the staff and having enough people around to train the staff. It's just something to be careful about. Expanding the staff, staff is really expensive and we're, you know. Should we be expanding the staff? Maybe not. Maybe we keep our scope a little bit smaller at National Office and allow the centers to do what they do best. And having senior staff turnover was a big problem with loss of historic knowledge. Unfortunately, this one is really hard to fix because we don't make enough money to pay enough, certainly for people living in Toronto, to stick around for a long time, um, at the society. So we have to be really good about creating training manuals and writing all this stuff down. It's, we're never going to be competitive. We don't have enough money to be competitive. So what did we learn? Be strategic when you accept gifts, restricted gifts and grants. Maybe make sure you have the money before you say yes to it. Um, having the board paying attention and diving into this stuff and having National Council being fully informed is really, really, really important. It's top tier in terms of what we need to keep doing. Um, and make sure your baseline costs are covered and stable before you expand the programming. And this side, this has come into play this year. I know a lot of people want to bring a lot of programs back and I'm being super careful about it because I don't want us to end up in this situation again. I want to make sure we can pay our bills before we can bring back the stuff that we can do extra. Going forward, I know two thousand and twenty-four is already, oh no. Okay, well, we'll just restart it. Um, two thousand and twenty-four has already happened, so. We have. Sorry, please don't judge me for my file structure. Also, don't look at my, how many items I have on my desktop, please. I know that's bad. No, I should have played from the, sorry, hold on. Oh no, it's gonna take forever. Um, two thousand and twenty-four has already happened and we've already made a lot of the changes that I've indicated on the slide. I promise you, I'm almost done. Current slide, there we go. Um, so this is sort of more looking into two thousand and twenty-five. Um, we have been focusing on increasing our revenue in two thousand and twenty-four, um, and fundraising with four unrestricted gifts. So that's been asking our members to help support us. Um, you guys really, really stepped up in twenty, both two thousand and twenty-four, or sorry, both two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. We had an extremely successful, um, fundraising campaign at the end of last year. So for those of you who donated, I wanted to say, extend a huge thank you. Um, because those gifts really, really matter and when it comes to bringing back the stuff that we do, that's not just rent and staff salaries and all of that other stuff. Bringing back the programming, that's where that money comes from is from those donations. Um, we raised, in that campaign, we had matching donors up to, I don't know, we had it up to twenty thousand dollars and we hit our goal. We hit our goal of raising an additional twenty thousand dollars, so a total of forty thousand dollars at the end of the year. And we hit it before my New Year's party. So I didn't have to send emails during it. So thank you. We hit it at five PM. Uh, the previous year, I'd been sending emails, zipping out of my party to send emails at like ten thirty PM to be like, please donate. Um, so we hit it before, before midnight, which was great. So thank you for those of you who helped contribute to that program. Going forward, uh, we are looking to keep the budget stable and with our fixed expenses reliably covered. This continues to be a bit of a tricky point because money keeps, our cost of stuff keeps going up, but we get there. Um, we're slowly reintroducing these national level programs in a sustainable way where we know we can cover the costs of this stuff. And we are focusing primarily on supporting the centers. I really think that National Office should exist to make your lives easier. You guys are, I assume you love doing this stuff. You love astronomy, you love going out and talking to people, you love showing the view of your scope to people. We should be here to make you, make it easier for you to do that. That's what National should be doing. Challenges, I'm not going to say, like, I'm really looking forward to the next, the coming years and bringing all this stuff back and making all this stuff happen. It's not without its challenges though, and I want to acknowledge that we do have some, some stuff we're facing. For example, there is some uncertainty in the US sales market. Geez, what a surprise. And interestingly enough, I think a lot of people don't realize this, our handbook sales make almost no money in Canada. All of our money is made in the US. And that's because everyone who wants the handbook is already a member of the society. Very few people in Canada buy it. Everybody in the US doesn't have anything like it, so they have to buy it. So we, we make lots of money off of the Astronomical League and Astronomy Magazine who resell our handbooks for us. It sounds like we're going to keep them as, as resellers this year and we're pushing for all. So we're trying to diversify, make sure we have the ability to fulfill orders to the US individually and maybe push harder on the resellers because then we can both absorb any costs that come with exporting our goods. Um, also costs keep going up, tech keeps going up, shipping keeps going up. We are looking at creative solutions to this. Right now, we have a shipping house, which is great because we don't have to have any staff dedicated to sending out items. But it's expensive. So then we're looking at maybe moving our shipping from the shipping house into the office and hiring someone temporarily in our busy season to help us ship stuff out. That might be cheaper than having a shipping house. So we're looking at creative ways to use the space that we have and the resources that we have, like this big office space downtown in a way that saves us more money. So we are, we're, we're worried about these two things. However, um, we're really lucky at the R A S C because as you saw, we have diverse revenue streams. This is not something that every not-for-profit has. I've talked to a lot of not-for-profits who are really worried because a lot of the funding grants, et cetera, is drying up as we get into economic uncertainty. We have publications, we have members and we have donations. So we have a little bit more stability from that. We can shift as we need to. Um, and we're creative. We, we'll, we'll try so many things to save money and we'll keep doing that. So, um, and if you have ideas about how we can creatively save money, I am also very open to hearing about that. Um, but it's not just saving money. We also have to creatively make more money. We can't, we can't thrive by cutting costs. So we have to start looking at things like supplementing with publication sales and bringing that, more of that money in so that we can provide more services. Uh, that's all I have for now. I'm giving lots of time, I hope, for questions. Um, because I think I want to hear from you what your concerns and your thoughts are. So I will leave it for questions now. Um, how, oh, National Council updates. We have an annual meeting coming up. It's on June twenty-second. All members are allowed to come and encouraged to come. At the annual meeting, it may be very administrative, but I recommend that you come anyway because it's good to have your voice heard. At that annual meeting, uh, which you can sign up for on our website, we will be recommending new auditors. Um, the society has had the same auditors for forty-three years. And we shouldn't, that's a bad thing to do. So you should be changing auditors, especially in the not-for-profit world, eh, every eight to ten years or so. Um, so we're doing that. It's for a number of reasons, that's one of them. Um, it's important that we have people who are not just used to seeing all our numbers and going, yep, that's the same, yep, that's the same, yep, you're good to go. We want someone to be looking critically at this. So we've recommended new auditors. Uh, they are a little bit less expensive than our current auditors, but still an equally sized one, maybe a little bit bigger. Um, Fruitman Kate's, high-grade interviews with them. They're extremely capable and they've come up with some ways that we can save a little bit of money in the process. So, um, we're putting the, that auditor forward. It has to be voted on by the members. Um, so that's what the annual meeting is for. That will be, uh, presented at the annual meeting. That's probably the biggest and most important update from the National Council meeting. Uh, what else is there? I had a lot of updates. We have some light pollution abatement movement coming along. Um, there will be new, uh, new designations coming soon that are going to be available. So we have, for those who don't know, we have the Light Pollution Abatement Crew that does dark sky site designations. Uh, we have a couple of new designations coming down the pipeline. Um, and we also have a Certificate of Merrick coming down the pipeline, which is a way of recognizing groups, people who have done good things for light pollution abatement. Uh, they are nominated by the centers, goes to National, National approves, you guys present to the people. Um, it's not ready yet, that should be ready in the fall. Um, and we'll be asking the National Council for feedback on those criteria over the summer. So that's coming down the line. Oh yeah, we've got some courses coming this summer. We have training sessions over the summer. We have, um, a social media training session for centers who are interested in participating more on social media and need some support with framework, what have you. We have that coming in July. We have, we haven't actually booked it yet though, but we'll send it out. Um, we have a membership training session on July sixteenth at two PM Eastern Time for any membership coordinators who are interested in learning how to use the system a little bit better. Uh, and we have a stellarium mobile course. We have, at National, we have a stellarium course for desktop that is provided just to members run by a dedicated group of volunteers all over the country. In order to sort of get it out a little bit more, we have one volunteer who's really keen on running stellarium mobile courses in a similar format as to when we ran Insider's Guide to the Galaxy. So online shows, we go over some of the cool stuff that's happening, how to use stellarium mobile to make it work. And then if you're interested in that, you can join and start participating in the stellarium desktop courses. We're aiming for six sessions from July to September, so two a month or so. It will be for everybody, not just members. So if you have new people who are keen on learning this stuff or you're excited to like share the R A S C with someone, this is a really good way to do it. Um, it will be open and available and it will hopefully draw a few new people in. So, uh, that's coming this summer. Thank you, John, for having this list. Anything else that I can?
What about the Nova program?
Yeah, okay, yep. The Nova program should be ready by the fall. We're updating a bunch of stuff in it to make sure that it's, so the Nova program is the New Observers to Visual Astronomy. It's an outreach program that's available to centers to run. It is sort of also, we have all of the, uh, slideshows available for centers to just hop in and use. It's got all accurate information. We just wanted to make sure that the information was sort of standardized across the society. Um, it's got support for the students and the teachers and all of that, but we have to make some changes to it. We're making those changes this summer. It should be available really, really soon. And I forgot to men, I do remember I mentioned something about the Canada Post strike. If there is a Canada Post strike, which it sounds like there might be, um, we will be sending out our, any orders through the store through the same way we did at Christmas, through, um, what are they called? Couriers, through couriers. We'll be sending them through couriers and then any letter mail journals, for example, like hard copy journals. And if you have laser pointer cards that are coming up, those will be delayed because we have no financially reasonable way to send those out unless it's Canada Post. So those will be delayed. Other than that, all the parcels will still go out as usual. Okay. I thought, Kim, I have to talk to you. If anybody here remembers working with Ally Vibert Douglas, who used to be at Queens? Her grandnephew came to the office and is doing research on a book about her. Um, yeah, and he wants to know what she was like. He has all sorts of, we, he's gone through our archives and everything. He has all sorts of information about her academic stuff, but he wants to know what she was like. Um, so if you remember her, I, Walter baby, I don't know, question mark, um, if you're on the internet. Um, and so that's, that's the other thing that I want to talk about folks here. If anyone remembers her, please come and talk to me. I think that's it. I think that's it. Okay, so thank you so much for having me. Um, it was lovely to be here. Kim, yeah. Yes. Yes. Kind of sort of, yeah.
Does that portion of, of the museum, their own, own floor, would say a portion of it?
Technically, it should be, yes. And we do allocate a certain portion of the floor space, about fifty percent of the floor space in the office. Um, that is allocated to door and or telescope costs. Yeah. Yeah, if, yeah. Yeah.
So on that, um, I know that people can go to the National Office and stop in Kia, but if you don't ever get to Toronto, is there a way that you can have an online view?
Yes. There, I believe it's on our website already. Um, a lot of the stuff that's in there has been digitized. Um, it's not the same because a lot of the stuff is physical, like as opposed to our archives, which is paper. Um, it's easier to digitize paper. The telescopes is kind of different. It, I think they've done what they can, they, Randall, I think Randall has done what he can. Um, he also has a really, really enthusiastic and, um, helpful young volunteer, which is awesome, Mateo. So Mateo's been kind of taking over for him on a lot of stuff on this. It's a very specific niche where you need like really interested people to do this stuff. Um, so some of it is digitized. You can kind of, if you go and, I can send the link over to whomever I need to. Um, but it's, it's buried in the RASK Archives section of the website, which is under history on the web, on the, um, website page. What's that? What's that? Yeah, that'd be fun, yeah. And if, yeah. The, um, The, the Telescope Museum is interesting and, and, um, I'm happy to chat a little bit more about this during the break. Um, if anyone is interested in hearing more about it. It is an interesting position for the society to be in because it is a physical thing that is in our office space right now. Our office space is non-negotiable, like we can't really get out of a commercial lease. So we're kind of stuck with it right now. Um, and it's, you know what? It's actually been medium level useful for us. We rent out the office space for filming a lot because it's a really interesting and unique background. So we've, we've had it, if you haven't seen Northern Star yet, it's on check. We sent out an email about it maybe last week. Um, it's a documentary about J S Plaskett and the Dominion Astrophysical Observatory in Victoria, B C. Part of that was filmed at the National Office. We had, um, we had another group. We get a lot of news people through R C I is doing a lot of filming in the office. So we, we're do, again, being creative, doing what we can to use the space in a way that makes us some money. So we do, we've, we've do what we can. Check out Northern Star though, it's available on check now. Yes.
Some of this in outreach and some schools, but absolutely, maybe people in the organization here can tell you to assign them. So I was just wondering, um, it hurt me that, uh, some kids might like to, uh, you know, they, they're interested in, um, you know, an artistic aspect or, or, you know, to, uh, send, if there was an opportunity to send something in and have, you know, uh, something creative put on the website.
We used to have a program like that actually called We used to have a program like that, actually, called Creation Station. And it encouraged comics and poems and artwork and that sort of thing, but that was run by our outreach coordinator. And we don't have an outreach coordinator right now, so we don't really have the staff for it. We, I would love to get it going again. Sky News was great for that because it would publish some of that stuff, which was really, really awesome. The journalism, maybe not the best spot for it. I'd love to put it back on the website, but right now I don't have the staff who can do it. So if there's someone who's super keen and wants to keep that program going as a volunteer at the national level, I would super definitely support that with the caveat that we're also moving our website from Drupal 7 to WordPress right now. And I would want to start that after we've moved to WordPress because WordPress is a million times more friendly to use to anybody other than people who know HTML. So if you know anyone who'd be interested in helping support that, I would love for it to come back. It must have been Creation Station, right? I will say, and I don't want to, I say this being very cautious not to put any extra strain on the member, on the volunteers who already do a ton of work. Roger, I'm looking at you because you run Regulus, I'm pretty sure. I would love for it to be done at National, but we realistically can't spend money on a person yet. But if maybe there's a spot in Regulus for something like that at the local level, like I don't, you know, like it's not the same because it's not as easy to access necessarily. Maybe it's not online, maybe what have you, but like, I think, I don't know. It's, I'm just trying to come up with solutions to, that, in formats that already exist where you could put it in temporarily until we can get it up and running back on the national website. I would love to bring that stuff back. And I think that's, I know, I know that there's like a sort of a RASK-wide struggle to find like find ways to engage younger people at the center level. So I think that is an area where National can really help with being on, you know, being on the internet and being, having something more easily clickable and having a big platform, that sort of thing. But as I've said, I'm just being cautious about bringing this stuff back because we don't have tons of volunteers and we don't have tons of staff anymore. But I will add it to the sort of like mental list I have of things that should be a priority. It was, it's a hundred and five thousand dollars a year. Yep. I mean, it's, I'm sure it's not bad. It's a big space and it's a great spot. I'm not happy with it because we don't, there's no reason for National to even be in Toronto. Like, we don't need, we don't, we're not doing stuff on the ground. Yeah, or... Like, we've talked through a whole bunch of different potential, like places, things that we could do in six years when the lease is over, from moving it to the suburbs. We've talked about moving it to the DDO in Toronto, but the issue with that is that there's no transit. And if it's still in Toronto, kind of, and so then, and we're, don't pay that much. And so do we pay enough to have anybody who has cars who can afford to drive into Richmond Hill to do it? So we've talked through lots of different, like, potential options for where we could end up. We could be completely virtual. We could just be remote. I don't love that because I actually really like being around my staff and my staff really like to be in person. We could move it to Sudbury. I've talked about moving it to Sudbury because I have family from Sudbury. So maybe we move it to Sudbury and then the cost of living is lower. Like, we don't need to be in Toronto. And it's...
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, there's a lot of things to consider. But it's just, you know, it's, it's, I, like, I, and I'm also very cautious about the Doorner Telescope Museum because it, anything we do physical, anything that we do in person, I try to avoid it because it feels like favorite, like showing favorites to Toronto. In fact, I think we actually kind of like show unreasonable disfavoritism towards Toronto. Like, I go out of my way to avoid doing things in Toronto because it feels, it doesn't feel like a RASK thing. It feels like a Toronto thing. And that doesn't feel like a good use of member funds. Y'all are not from Toronto. Why would you want your money spent in Toronto? Like, it just doesn't... Anyway, my point is, I've thought about this a lot. There's a lot of reasons to not be in Toronto. But if we move outside of Toronto, that might mean an entire turnover of the staff. And that's not something we're ready yet for. It's not something we can even really think about because we can't get out of the lease. It's something that we'll have to think about in six years when we have a chance to move. Yeah, we'll have to see. I know, I know. Yeah, I was ten. Yep, yeah, but I don't, and like, I don't know the history on why it was sold. I don't know why, like, but we owned 262 College or something, right? It was like, yeah, it was, anyway. I don't know. It's too bad. Yeah, it was a house, yeah. It was tight, but it was a space. And like, anyway, it's, we have lots of creative solutions to this stuff that can come down, but right now we're a bit stuck on the lease. So that's, you're sensing me being frustrated that we have to spend that much money on it. I talked about this briefly with Malcolm at the beginning, which is that I know a lot of people are unhappy about the lease and especially like some of the things, it happened in 2021. That was a time when we were already questioning downtown office space. I know people are unhappy with that money being spent there. I think that the Society is, like, we want the Society to still be here in six years. And we may not be happy with the decision that was made, but I still love the RSC and I still want us to be around. So we're going to suffer through having to spend that much money on a lease. We're going to use the space as effectively as we can in the time that we have, and then we will find cheaper, better solutions going forward. I also talked about this briefly with Malcolm, and this is important to me, so I wanted to mention that I know I listed all the stuff that National does, but to me, we get a lot of people, and I understand, I totally understand this, saying that the membership fees are really expensive. I know they are. I know they're expensive compared to other organizations, but this is, part of being part of the RSC is being part of a bigger organization. It's not just the local centers. You guys are part of the landscape of astronomy in Canada. We are big enough that we can make the handbook. We're big enough that we can spend forty grand or whatever, it's thirty-three grand on printing the handbook. Like, we, small clubs can't do that and they don't have the resources to do that. And then we have the name to be able to distribute this and make enough money off of this to keep that production going. And that's, that's really important to me. I think that's part of, I don't know, it's part of why I'm a member, I support. I want Canada to be a player in the astronomy game. And that's, being this big national-level organization helps with that. It's fine to be a small and independent. I know plenty of people who are in smaller, independent clubs, and if that's what you're going for, that is totally fine, I get it. But being part of the Society is being part of a bigger, a bigger mission, as it were. So I just wanted to mention that because it's important to me. Any other questions?
Oh, sure. I'm curious what happened to all the data sets from the...
They're still, we still have them. You can buy them, yeah, you can buy them, yeah. Yeah, it's basically just fundraising at this point, but yeah, you can buy them.
Just all, all the files are still there?
They're all still there, yeah. Yeah, it was, that was, I liked that way of actually getting the data to people. Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you do, if you guys keep doing that, send them to me because I'd love to see them again. Oh, fun.
Oh, the flats weren't bad.
They weren't bad?
Yeah, they didn't work.
Oh, they were bad? Oh, oh, dear, okay. Interesting, okay. Unfortunately, we can't fix that problem now. I wish we could. Yeah, it was, that was, I thought that was fun and I think it would be, actually be kind of neat to start up like a, yeah, it was, it's a neat way to get into, especially if you don't have a big expensive rig. That telescope caused me a lot of stress because it almost burned down one year. There was a fight, I went and saw it, actually, when I was off, in that year that I was off, I drove to California and I went and saw the telescope and it was... It went right up to the edge of the lot. It was terrifying. And then at the, if you just go over the hill, literally everything in sight, like across mountain ranges, it was all burned. It was, I don't know how, like, I don't know how they dealt, anyway. Scary stuff. Observatories here have problems, observatories in California have problems. And Kevin?
First question, is it a useful metric? I think it might be, is to allocate against the membership fees, what members' services get, but what does a member get out of that fee? Because we have no control over membership fees increases anymore. And at least it's a benchmark so that the next time the membership fee is proposed, that to help explain it to the members, this is what's changed from there to here.
Oh, okay, so you mean like in terms of... Right, yeah, okay. I did do my best with this to line up the members, like, we bring in forty-five, like, two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars of membership fees and then we spend, if you count staff, I would count staff, we spend more on members.
It's just an exercise of, for a hundred and one dollars, what goes there? And if you want to increase that, then why? The other question I had was, it seems to me from the financial notes that RASK is allocating investment portfolio, revenue increases and losses into its operating budget.
Do you want to get into this? Okay. So... God, I would love that. You know how much I would love that? You know how much work that would save? So we've brought this up multiple times with our auditors and we will bring it up again with our new auditors. And you'll see this in the, we talked about this in the National Council meeting, I talked about this briefly at the National Council meeting. If, with the, they say, the accounting standards are if you have externally restricted funds, so for us, that would be the Doorner shares that we have, those are to be shown in the balance sheet. And that would be great. Internally restricted funds are to be shown in the PNL, so what you're talking about. That's what we have been told over and over and over again by our auditors. We would love for them not to be. They have cited the CPA handbook, so... I can, if you want, I can send you the exact response that they gave me, but they cited the handbook saying that internally restricted funds, because internal restrictions technically mean nothing. They're rules that we placed on ourselves, but at any time we can go, actually, just kidding, I want that money. And so because of that, I think that's why maybe it's kept in the PNL. We, if you, you haven't been to the National Council meetings, Michael talks about this every single time. We take that out of our operating, like of our PNL. He does all this like voodoo with the spreadsheet, not voodoo with the spreadsheet. He removes that from the spreadsheet and he puts it somewhere else to show what our actual operating budget is because that money is not, we're not using, we're not realizing those gains. Where they are just sitting there doing their thing and in theory, we're using the revenue from them, so just the dividends and interest to pay for our outreach, et cetera. So, yeah, those, I would love for them not to be shown there. Michael would love for them not to be shown there. We will bring it up again with our auditors when we get new auditors. And maybe, like, there was, it has, it has, we've gone into these long conversations about it. It has to do with when we said what we said about those funds. Like, it's an old, like, I think if they're made newer, then it's shown a different way, but because it was before 2011 or something like that, it's shown a different way. So I can say, if you're curious, I can send you the emails from the auditors. Yeah, it's, but we, it's a discussion we've had a lot. And, yeah, I would love for them not to be in the PNL because they are not operating budget. Sorry, you got me on a topic that we talked about. This is one that no one really cares about, but I've learned lots about, so I like to share it when I can. Don't anybody ask me about the CRA and navigating their structure.
Any other questions? Well, Jenna, thank you so much for coming all the way from Toronto. We really appreciate it. It was great to see you and to meet you in person. And we just have this little thing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks very much. Now we're going to take a five-minute break. And if you have anything you want to chat with Jenna before she leaves, and then we'll come back with Rick Wagner and what's up in the sky.
Thank you.
There you go. Yeah. Yeah. What a stupid computer, what a stupid computer. Anyway, so Saturn and Neptune are quite close together and then Venus and Uranus are quite close together. Interesting that there are two pairs. Saturn is far enough up Neptune, I mean it's eighth magnitude, so it's not going to be an easy thing to see. And Jupiter is in conjunction, so not visible. No interesting small body oppositions. There is one. Hold on, what? We're all got, everybody's getting excited. 12/11 breaths solely. On the 28th, the June is going to, it's about 14th magnitude star. Or asteroid's going to occult a 12.5 magnitude star. So that's pretty dim yet, but should be visible in decent sized scope to watch the disappearance. 2.3 magnitude drop in 3 point, up to 3.8 seconds. And you can see that just about everybody's in the path. Most of Kingston just misses it, Amherst Island. But. 3:57 UT, so this would be the evening of the 27th, just before midnight. Uh, no, just, just at almost midnight. Yeah, that was. Yeah. Uh, not much. I will, I will give updates. Uh, I will be preparing the normal thing for Regulus and website. And Kevin puts it on the web and on the All Things Astronomy Calendar. Hey, alright, I'll arrange that. Anything else? No. Nope, I didn't see it either.
And so now by request, I'm going to share my screen and we're going to go into internet world. And look up astrosphere. What, what, what? So Taylor Swift, no. Uh, Astro Switch. So for those that don't know, there is an app. You can get a miniature version of the website and it has all the stuff that I'm going to show you. And we don't need this guy. So this is an astrospheric non-pro version and I'm going to show you how to sign up. And, or I'm going to show you the difference between the two. So if you click on these, these two icons, you've got the ensemble and the blend model, the national blend model. And the ensemble shows individually three different weather forecast models for cloud on the same map. The ensemble shows a blend of eight-ish models. So we click on that and we get, oh, sorry, you gotta pay $29 online. Or you join an astronomy club. And so let's submit that and I'll get the code. Wonders of Technology. There it is. And. 8066. So this, this is my own pop-up, it's already. And I have some favorites on the map. So these are favorites that I've created for myself. I've got one for Starfest, one for Fallen Stars. And these are mini versions, quick views of the cloud forecast in the horizontal bar. So tonight it looks like it's clear, cloudy at some point in the next little while, clear. And then down at the bottom, so we've got Fallen Stars, we've got my home, and we've got Skyfly Mexico. So if I just click on Fallen Stars. You can see the icon, or the center of the map, crosshairs are here. And there's a little Fallen Stars icon that I've created and it's visible for anyone that uses. Astro, astrospheric and it's up to you if you want to make it a favorite. And then we've got a little star here for the various astronomy clubs in the province, New York. We've got R A S C Hamilton, K W Center and so on, right? And then we've got one down here in the States. Whatever that is. If I click on the map. Then you get the bigger picture and you can zoom in. And you can see what's going on everywhere or you can zoom in. And then you can change the view from cloud cover to transparency. You can look at the seeing, you can get the jet stream, which of course you need to zoom out to get a sense of where it's going. And, and so on. So, and then you can change satellite view, terrain view. Uh, and then if I click on that, it'll become a favorite, but it's already a favorite. Now looking at the, this, so there's a similarity here with the Clear Sky Chart. So let's open up the Clear Sky Chart. Here's the Fallen Stars Clear Sky Chart. Now, you know, we've been using the Clear Sky Chart longer, I think, than astrospherics been around. But you can see similarities. You've got cloud cover, transparency, seeing and darkness. And each of the blocks represents one hour in the future. And I can't remember the regularity with which this updates, but this data is all Canadian data. It's from the Canadian Meteorology Center. Astrospheric, similar in layout. It's got cloud, it's got transparency, that seeing. But within the cloud. Blocks, there are little mini blocks. And each one of those represents a different model. There are three models. So you can get the astrospherics overall view, which is blue, but there is a model in there that says white. Now, how do we, how do we get more detail on that? If we click on Ensemble Cloud Cover. Now we can see more. Now if I open this up and make it bigger, uh-oh, maybe, maybe I'm not. So. The colors are the providers of the model. Where there are no colors on the map, they're in agreement that it's clear. When the color on the map is white, they're in agreement that it's cloudy. When there are other combinations based on this color wheel. There could be two models that say cloudy, one that says clear. You'll see that based on the colors. So if you look over here to the right in Burlington. For this particular time period, it's going to say that the GFS and RDPS kind of agree. And the ICON says something else. And likewise, down here, you've got oranges and greens and yellows. What we're looking for really, for a convincing weather forecast, is agreement. So not too worried about whether or not two of the three agree. It's more like, I want to know if all three agree. And then I still use the Clear Sky Chart to get another opinion. And you look for a consensus. So you also get on, on this map, some things, or in this chart, some things that the Clear Sky Chart doesn't give you. It gives you predicted KP index along here. It gives you smoke maps, which have become very popular these days. And if I open this up. I don't know why it's not changing. Weird. Anyway. We get also, not only do we get the ability to see a smoke map here, but we see it in the blocks as well. So, you know, it might say it's going to be perfectly cloudy, but if you see one of these deep red bars in the transparency line. I'd look at the smoke, you know, you can, you can default to cloud all the time. And then when you look at the transparency line, you might want to change it to smoke when you see that red. Just to see where the smoke is and where it's coming from and how it's affecting your transparency. Then you've got the KP index, 2.3, 2.7, blah, 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 not a lot expected over the next little while. You've got sunrise and sunset times and. As you can see, the moon is up most of the time while the sun is down today. And then that's, you know, it's going to change over the next couple of days as cycles progresses. And then if you scroll down, right, like the same with the app, scroll down, there's more. And, and it really is good information. Here's the next week, from Sunday the 15th to Friday the 20th. Basically, it's nine days of, of, of weather data. And you can see the KP index goes up to four on, on Sunday the 15th, maybe, four on the 16th as well. And then you got moon details. You've got the depressing amount of darkness that's in the sky at this time of the year, but it's darkness. And little, little bits of information. And then there's a neat little animation here of the auroral oval forecast. It does work. And so, and these are the update, I guess, kinds of the models. And use the RDPS, the GFS, the GFS and then, and then. And I think that is. And if you go to your app, you'll see all the same information available to you. You can create your own favorites, you can make your home location a favorite, et cetera, et cetera. This is a benefit of membership of the R A S C Kingston Center. We've all put, we've got 20 members, we've got actually up to 21 now. Yeah, advanced forecasts are very interesting for, for our group of people into astronomy. And so it's a benefit. And that's that for me. Anybody have any questions? I seem to have lost my Zoom. So nobody has any thumb drives or anything that they want to? Sure? That's fine if you don't. So I have a couple of slides here at the end that we'll close out with. Oh, you know, why don't you go first? Yeah.
So everybody who's read Regular Flow, that I'm not going to be treacherous come November through November, we're looking for all the pressures. And a great warm up to November, which means to fill in that off. Our auditor is not plenty around at the end of the fiscal year, so we do the best. So we're looking for somebody to do the audit this year as well, if anyone wants to do that. So if you're interested in that, we close it September 30th. And then in the next week, maybe two weeks, I will have all of the paperwork all sorted out and I'll hand it out to the treasurer. So what you get is a binder, the auditor, and maybe plenty of something. You get the binder with all of the paperwork that went on during the week. There'll be, during the year, there'll be a printout of the ledger. The ledger will be sorted according to different categories, with money going in and coming out for different things. There'll be an envelope with all of the deposit checks and deposit sheets. And you will get the ledger on a thumb drive. So that you can go in there and sort that, file it anywhere you want. There'll also be a copy of the, of my final report to the center that will be presented in the November meeting. So that's the, and so you go in there and you start what you want, you look at what you want, sample what you want. It's not a full audit. You're not required to do a full audit, official audit by a faculty because of our small status. So it is, it is a financial review. So no questions. And so then we'd like to have that back by the end of October. So that we can have the auditor's report before the November meeting. And then the executive meet and take that all into account. And then that's it. So it's, and in the meantime, I'm sure Michael Burns, who is the auditor, he's plenty traveling, so he'll be around all the time that he's needed. I'm sure people will ask him, but if he wants to, he's done it for three or four years now. If anyone has any questions, they're just probably getting specific, but I'll check them, check anything. And but yeah, November meeting, pressure required.
Kevin just volunteered?
Yeah, I have the, or this treasure statement I have learned over the last year is that I analyze the book. I actually do physical ledger work. Once a month, it takes about an hour, hour and a half maximum, to set it up for a long. But I wait until the R B C talking with the statements are ready. Then I start the statement from the men. I go into the department and I have to say the same, and I get the membership information for the previous month. Because those are definitely the years that we have the next month. So I wait until that is all available. I need to be in at the beginning of the month and start a call, then it's a project, some natural, and all of the membership topics. But now, I find, I don't think it makes any difference to around the, the due date of the month I'm here. Very sure.
No, my apologies, I'm not the auditor.
Well, we are. So we are, yeah, we are the best, we are the best. We are the, have to decide what they want to sample, a reasonable sample. Some, some orders go to every item. But we can, what we want to do is that what's in the ledger, they're just, they're separate in the end statement and the digital test. And make sure that we're being recognized, which is called D C and documentation, so that people are being informed. So this is, and this is not a daily, not just, and we'll keep spending money on, but, but we can, we can work to that.
And, and these, these are important positions in our center. And if you have never been involved in the board of directors capacity, this is a good opportunity for you to do some volunteering for your center. It's not really all that ownerless and task. You, you spend some time with the bank, you spend some time with statements, but it keeps the center running. So we'd love to see a couple of volunteers if you have the time in November, I guess, at the next AGM.
November, selecting the pressures, auditors, leading the auditors by the second.
Okay. So yeah, it's just some volunteer time and helps the center. So hopefully people will think about it. Thank you, Susan. So this is, this is basically, we're at the end of the meeting. Check out our website, kingston.ras.ca for all kinds of stuff. It's hard to say everything that's there, but we have a very nice calendar of events that, that will give you an idea of what to look forward to in the month ahead. Rick's What's Up in the Sky is, is on there, our Regulus is on there. We also have a Facebook group and the YouTube channel where the recording of this meeting will be posted later. And if you're not a member, you, you certainly can join us at this website, secure.ras.ca/membership. In the summer, we do not have meetings in July and August, as has already been alluded to. On what would have been the meeting dates for those months, we will get together at Lake Ontario Park for a picnic and apparently hand pumps. And. An announcement will be made as to the go, no-go, a few days beforehand. We will do that on our email chat list and the dates are tentatively July 9th and August the 13th. Usually we would say the next Wednesday would be the backup date, but in August it gets tricky with Starfest. So stay tuned for that. Our next meeting will be right here at Queens in person on September the 10th. And that's the end of the meeting. Thank you all very much for attending.